And the answer is the third, travelers had the option of engaging any contractor they wished. They engaged five star. I'm sure that there were financial reasons why it made sense to travelers and five star to continue on in the project. Needless to say, it wasn't the first choice of, I think, anyone who dealt with them over the last few years. But nevertheless, they do bring certain amount of institutional knowledge to the project and are cooperating and are under the direction of Beacon Consulting and travelers. And so they can't really push back on issues that are relatively obvious or under contract for them to do. So we're not in a position where they're in any way refusing to do any of the work that we've directed them per the contract and per the sketches that we can put together.
The way it creates the sound, buddy.
You Frank?
Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that's terrific about the site work of the sub base. We battled that for a long time and it's, you know, seems to imply things for the grading and the paving, but actually it implied a lot for the handicap access ramp and plaza area outside of Nora's treehouse, which would have been reduced if the grading hadn't been corrected. So it's not just grading, it's actually a huge, huge accomplishment. So kudos to the team for that.
Yeah, and I think it's a sign that they are trying to do things right. You know, it's kind of the first effort of sort of finished work and they're trying to do it the right way and ask the right questions and then get it done right. So.
And related to drainage relative to town hall. So there were a whole host of implications besides curbing.
Yeah, it is. And I can, the responsiveness is better as well. As just to remind people, five star does not work for us anymore. Five star works for travelers, travelers works for us. And we wrote in our takeover agreement that there actually be a chain of communication along those lines as well. So we are much more accountability under the new agreement.
And travelers representative is attending all of the weekly project meetings. In a way, that's one of the benefits of Zoom, that he can actually be there without having to leave his office wherever that may be and participate in the meeting. So we're happy to see that he's attending. And he's relatively quiet, but he's there and he knows what's going on and knows what the issues are.
Yeah, that's huge. Anyone else on the select board if I go to the public? Are there any questions from the general public? And if you could use either the raise hand feature, I'm on several screens, so it's hard to see me, hard for me to see you if you physically raise your hand. I know some people do that, but I'll try. But I prefer it if you click on participants and use the raise hand feature if you have any questions to be recognized. It does not look like there's any questions from the general public. So.
See any.
Yeah, thank you very much, Richard. Thank you for that.
Eric, we'd like to suggest we come back in about two months, then we'll be able to really give you a good picture of where we're going schedule wise and of course budget wise. So that would be my suggestion. Obviously, if we need to get together sooner, we're happy to do it.
Yeah, well, and I'll see how it goes if there's any kind of milestone that comes up or if there's concerns. If the project's moving along pretty good, I think we find a couple of months. But if it looks like this in a month, I think we might ask to come back in a month.
We'll do it however you like.
I do want to.
Do this. Thank you.
Sure.
Eric, just one quick question.
Please, yeah, go ahead.
Are there continuing to be postings on the town's website or the library's website regarding the status of the library?
I might go to Jim Kolb on that one.
We have not, high ball, we have not updated that, but that's an excellent, an excellent suggestion. I think I will talk to the folks in the library and we can get that posted.
It's just I get asked all the time, what's going on with the library?
No, I think it's, I think it's excellent. I think, and now that you've heard from Richard and Mike as to the status, we will craft something, probably send it around to select people before it's, before it's made public and we will post it. Good idea.
Eric, Brian Conley is on here too, the chair of the library board.
Yeah, David, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey.
Okay, great. We have, to Paul's question, we have done an FAQ update after the takeover agreement was signed and posted on our website as well as some other locations. And then we also recently responded to some next door Sherborn inquiries as well. So it's, the information is probably 30 days old and we'll probably, and we've got some progress, we're more than happy to publicize that. So we'll do an update.
Thank you.
All right. So with that moving on, I got my next agenda item here is about an inch thick, inch and a half thick. This is the, under land use matters, agenda item number three. It's an update on Coolidge Crossing, based on development is here. And as people know, they're going to talk about the application for a local initiative program for their comprehensive permit. So I believe it's going to be for a friendly 40B for Coolidge Crossing. Who's going to speak? Which of the McDowell's or is it going to be Eric? Who's going to speak?
I'm happy to start and Roy, you can join in wherever you want. But as you've seen in your large package that we submitted, it's the.
I just want to clarify.
Sorry, this is Todd McDowell from Baystone Development. We put together the project eligibility application and there's that state form that's on the top and then all the subsections that follow really include anyway, from site control documents to architectural plans, site, initial site plans, and basically the letter support from the local housing partnership. There's a lot of various documents throughout that. And now what this is, is this is an application to the state for saying that the select board is in, is in favor of the idea of this project moving forward. And then they would, the state would vote to allow a project to move forward on the state, on the site. And we would then make a full comprehensive permit application to the ZBA. It's a little bit of an extra step, but it shows that the town is supportive of the idea of a project at the site, like as we're proposing. It's still, there's no, there's nothing to stop comments from the select board, planning board, or any other individual in town or resident at the ZBA comprehensive permit process. It's just, this is just the first of many steps.
And the competence, and that's, any kind of 40B goes to that comprehensive permit through the ZBA, correct?
Correct.
That's what I say that. This is basically just to kind of finalize the overall town support and formalize that.
Yes.
Are there any of the details you wanted to give about it or just take, go take questions?
Well, it's the, the plan we came up with is pretty much what you've seen the other, the previous meetings we've had, maybe a few slight tweaks here and there just to work with, just as we finalize layouts and various other.
I think my headphone just died. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah, we can hear you talking.
I can hear you.
Sorry, my ear pod for some reason, I guess, is not holding a charge. So I apologize, I lost my train of thought. But basically, a lot of this is what we presented in previous meetings with additional detail regarding the site control documents, the various additional site plans to show some initial, I think, to the gas sewer and water and Natick.
Did you say water?
But sorry, sorry, water in Framingham and sewer, and it just shows initial plan for where those utilities would be on site.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board here? Yeah, George.
Great, guys. Thank you so much. I went through your whole submission. I just want to make a few comments that I think it's important that our board support this. You know, we've been talking about this project for a number of years now, since our town meeting, I think it was December 6, 2017 or 16. So it's been a while. These guys have really thought out this process. They've put the buildings back by buying the neighboring property. They have met with conservation. They have talked to the energy committee. I think an initial letter of support is something very important on this that our board really, really should, should get on board with. We have, the time for details is later when they submit to the ZBA. I think, I think right now, we want to say, look, we want to support this project because it's important to the town. We've, we've got another project on our docket on Hunting Lane, which we're all very much opposed to, when, you know, if we could get this one moving along, it could help us protect our interests in other areas of town, not just Hunting Lane. I know there's a big property on Maple Street and other parts of town where we really need to come together on this as a town and do what we can to support this so we can move it forward and really get the control that we need when it comes to affordable housing.
Well said. Well said. Any other comments from the board? Okay, and any comments in the public?
Paul has his hand up, Eric.
Hi, Paul. I miss the physical hands. I'm always looking on the right side of a little blue virtual hand. So go ahead, Paul.
I have a comment on the letter that we're going to send. I have a proposed edit for that. But I think at this point, you're only asking for general comments. I don't have any general comments. I just have a specific little edit that I want to propose for the endorsement letter.
Sure, go ahead.
Is this the right time?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
So as I read the letter, it was an excellent letter. It was already signed by David Williams. So has it already gone? Is it too late for edits?
No, no, it hasn't gone. We've not seen it.
Okay, so because, well, let me tell you what the proposed amendment is, and then I can tell you what the because is. I'd like to add a sentence somewhere in there that would say something to this effect. And I'm not, I'm not committed to the specific words, but to the concept. The idea would be that the select board reserves the right to later, as the process unfolds, to raise further recommendations regarding design and construction details. And the reason why I would like to put that in there is that the letter's all very positive about the project as it should be. But it creates the impression that, that we've signed off on the entire project. I think it would be wise for us to hold open the possibility that as it goes through the hearings before the Board of Appeals or otherwise, that we might weigh in with something that we'd like to see with regard to the construction or the design. I'm also mindful of recent correspondence from the Energy Committee suggesting various ways that this thing should be designed or constructed. I don't have an opinion on that. I'm not, I'm not advocating one side or the other. I'm just suggesting we keep the door open for that. So if that issue does seem like it would make sense for everybody, that we have the opportunity to comment on it later.
Paul, what's the language you're proposing?
The language I'm proposing is the select board reserves the right to later, as the process unfolds, to raise further recommendations regarding design and construction details.
Can I make a suggestion? I think that's a good addition. The next to last paragraph, the last sentence reads, "The board is enthusiastic about seeing this project get underway and will work with the developer to streamline the chapter 48, 40B process as much as possible." I think that would be a place to add and to discuss the project and raise further issues with the developer. I'd like to leave it open ended. I don't want it to be, this, I think, is intended to be a endorsement for, of the lip with the Department of Housing and Community Development. So I'd just like to make it as brief a statement as possible. What do you think about adding that language to the next to last paragraph?
Well, I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to connote or denote the idea that by signing this letter, we haven't walked away from the project and we're not going to have any further comments and we're done. I would like to keep that door open a little bit. Not that we may, we may not have any further comments. I'm not saying we will.
I think, and this is just the first step in the process. So I have no problem making a reference to, you know, further discussions and to raise further issues in the process. I just, the language reserve the rights, I, you know, you and I are both lawyers. I think it sounds a little legalistic. I would leave it a little more open ended, noting that we may have other things we want to talk about with the developer. But I would make it more general.
In the past letters, I was going to say the past letters to Mass Housing said, "The town of Sherburn reserves the right to provide additional comments as its review of the proposed project continues, or as additional project information becomes available."
That's good too. I mean, I'm not wedded to particular language. I just think that somewhere in here, I want to, I want to convey the, the idea that they still may hear from us. Not that they will hear from us, but they may hear from us. That by signing this letter, we're not, we're not done.
Okay. I'll leave it up to lawyers. It sounds fine. I don't think it's unreasonable to reserve some rights later on down the path. This is the first step of a, of a, you know, not lengthy, but let's say comprehensive, ironically, process. David, was that, um, has there really been one other friendly 40B in town? Is that 59 North Main? Has there been another friendly 40B?
Yeah.
Just so, if that was taken from 59 North Main, it'd be applicable then. Cause that was a success story as well. All right. Any other comments from the board? And David, just edit the letter accordingly. I think insert in that language. Seems like we have a consensus here. Okay. If there's no board, I see Michael, yeah, David?
Todd and I exchanged communications today and there were some minor edits that they wanted that were recommended by their attorney. One of them was changing the name from Baystone Development LLC to Baystone Sherburn LLC, which is the actual entity. And then there was a brief note about the regulatory agreement is between DHCD, the town and the developer. And on page two, first paragraph, we're removing an LLC reference. That's it.
That's simple enough.
Yeah. That's like a big deal to me.
I'm okay with it.
That sounds reasonable. Yeah.
And who signs that letter?
David.
David?
You can vote to approve the letter and authorize me to send it, or you can, you can tell me to change the name and send it to someone else. So.
I think if we vote to approve it, we should send it as the board.
Yeah. So without a vote from the board, what is it? All five signatories?
With, Eric, say that again.
If we didn't vote to, um, sign it to you, what is it? All five, all select board members?
It could, the, the board can vote to authorize the chair to sign it, or it can be all members?
Without a vote, it has to be all, it has to be three members, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Question. Eric?
Um, yeah, who was that?
Frank Jenkins.
I love, oh, let me hold on one second, Frank. So I got two other people from the general public and I want to clarify. Is it about this letter right here? I'm sorry, I can cut him off there. Um, yeah. So what's the board think? I say just, you know, put on three board members on it.
That's fine. Let's hear the comments from the general public and then we can work out the details when we vote on it.
So the first person I saw had raised their hand virtually was Michael Lesser. Michael, you on?
I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street. Speaking as both a resident and I'm also a member of the Energy Committee. As raised by Paul and some of the others, there's obviously issues around the, excuse me, oh, in terms of the issues of the design and the sustainability of what the, how the project will turn out in the end. I just want to report that there have been ongoing discussions with them and that they're, and that the developers are interested in pursuing some ways of operationalizing the kind of general broader sustainability and greater sustainability goals that the town is beginning to develop for itself and any other projects. And so that there's an ongoing discussion that will continue to see if we can find a way to make it much more sustainable and less energy use than most projects under the standard energy code. And the developers, since we just started that fairly recently, they've been quite responsive and they're looking into that and we'll hear how that, how that progresses. So, but in the end, it's, it's quite positive at this point to see how we're moving there. And we'll keep you updated as to how that goes and that'll be part of the ongoing process anyway, to see that. So I just wanted to report that issue.
That's very good. Thank you. Nice to hear that. The next person I have on the list is Stephanie Kiefer.
Yes, hi, Stephanie Kiefer. And I'm here on behalf of Baystone. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things with your questions with the letters and signatures on that. And I apologize, I couldn't figure out how to add my last name onto the Zoom. So for the letter that goes to the DHCD, a letter of support if the board is willing to do so, it's generally by the board of selectmen, but if the selectmen prefer that the town administrator, I think that the DHCD is fine with that, but they would want a vote from the board authorizing the town administrator to, to sign such letter on behalf of the board. And then the second point, these are all just kind of procedural issues. Part of the request for the board's endorsement on behalf of this would also include the, there's a, if you look in the package that was submitted on the application form, there's a line for the town to sign off physically on the, on the form itself. Again, same, same procedure. The, the board could authorize the chair or could authorize the town administrator, but we would ask just for a vote in case the DHCD ever had a question on that. So just kind of two points of interest. And then I think finally, just to, to pick up on, on kind of Paul's comments with respect to the letter. Yes, obviously within this, this is a, it's a multi-step process. So the, the lip project eligibility that goes to DHCD to the state is just step one. And that's getting that project eligibility from the state is what allows then the applicant to submit the application to be filed with the zoning board of appeals. And then that's the public hearing process. And at that point, you know, any town board, any public member can of course weigh in because then the project is within the public hearing process at the local level. So I hope that clears up any questions that you had.
I think it's consistent with our discussion. I think we're saying we have three members sign, uh, sign the letter and, and I think we're somewhat familiar with the process. So thank you though. And Frank Jenkins, Frank Jenkins, did you want to say something, Frank?
Yes.
Well, you just muted yourself. You're unmuted now, you muted it.
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
I'm sorry. Along the lines of what Paul and Chuck and then also Michael, does it make sense to have a, an oversight committee, a design review committee, or some sort of non-binding but committee working with Baystone, giving them an opportunity to ask questions of what the town's interest might be, giving the town an opportunity to hear what Baystone is doing and what some of the issues are in order to enhance communications. And this might, because this is a big project. I mean, this is 120 units, three buildings. There may be some details that we might, that the town might wish to weigh in on that Baystone may have no problems with one way or the other. And I'm going to ask Baystone, is this something that you would encourage or mind working with the town on? It's a way to communicate, keep the lines of communication open.
Frank, can I, can I just add something before based on response? One thing I don't want to do is add another committee layer that's going to cause delays. That's.
Well, I don't need you.
So that, that's my only concern with that because they are working closely with the Energy Committee. I know Michael Lesser and another member, former member of the Energy Committee, John Hyde, who's very familiar with, with the sustainability, construction items, have had good conversations with them. You know, they're going to be going directly to the ZBA. I just don't want to make another committee that they have to go to to, to cause any delays. That's my only concern with your question, Frank.
Okay, well, all right. Maybe that's the case. I, I just thought it would be good to keep lines of communication open so we know.
Is there a mean, is there a means that you could create a committee that actually does streamline it? That's, let's say is bound by ad hoc committee or one is not bound by open meeting law that could streamline communication?
That's really what I'm thinking about. Yeah, planning board should be on it, I would think. Maybe the housing partnership should be on it. Maybe Michael Lesser should be on it. I mean, he's got an important issue he has to deal with.
Are there any thoughts on the board?
Maybe that's the committee. I don't know. But I agree with you, George. I don't want to delay things and complicate things. I just want to enhance the relationship as we go through this process. It's going to be a two or three year period. A lot of details, a lot of decisions, a lot of actions. We just want to make sure the end product meets the town's needs.
It is a big question. I don't think we're going to resolve it right here, right, under the agenda item. But I think it's certainly worth thinking about, especially if we can actually think of something that does streamline it. That's not someone who's bound by open meeting and can represent their various departments and report back to them in order to actually faster, more streamlined. At least it's good. Craig Mills is virtually raising a hand.
Yes. Thank you, Eric. Craig Mills, 39, Hunting Lane. I just wanted to express my support for this project overall. I think the, I think Baystone has been remarkably responsive to the community needs so far and really proactively working to respond to town needs. I, I think, I can't speak for certainly all of my neighbors, but certainly some of them. And I know that we feel that it's important that there's no drawdown on the town aquifer. That's a big plus to this project, to say nothing of use of the Natick sewer. And, and this project is obviously far more preferable than many of the other projects in town. So I encourage the, the select board to work hard to streamline the process so that this project can move forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for those words. Now, real quick, Michael Lesser, do you have something to say? Do you just leave your hand up before?
No, I had, I put it up again. I'm next. A few little follow up in that, one of the issues in terms of how this moves forward, to the extent that one of the options for this, the more sustainable design is a particular process called passive house that is growing in, in use and that being applicable in other things. And I want to bring up the issue for the town, as I've offered that we can get somebody to come in and present to the select board and to the ZBA about this approach so that they can learn about it for possibly this project as well as others. As meanwhile, while Baystone is also looking at that, it also is, it's a particularly appealing process because it's fairly operationalized in the sense that even akin to some of the issues Frank brought up, it's a very clear cut process in terms of how, what the design issues are and how that's, they're defined. So that actually makes it a lot easier in some ways for, for people to see how they're doing on that scale of a sort of energy efficiency and sustainable design. But I still want to bring up that, independent of how their progress goes, which hopefully will be positive in terms of at least doing some feasibility study work on that, that I'd like to, to hear back at some point from the select board that we can have a small presentation, as I've offered by email, that we could bring somebody in from the passive house Massachusetts group, the director there to present so that you're just informed about what it is that seems to. so that you're just informed about what it is that seems to be a, a practical way to, to move sustainability forward.
Okay. Did you find someone that would be willing to come and present?
I have somebody, there's somebody who's lined up. We have to just find a schedule that, to make, and they're willing to do a short presentation and a Q and A. And we'll see how interested people are to do more than that. So so I have an option lined up that I could do it and to invite other people, even some of the other developers that might be coming to town to do projects so that they're aware of this. And people can then see what they think of it too. I mean, it's a, it's an important evolution and it's a practical, practical one.
Great. Todd, Todd McDowell.
Thank you from Baystone Development. I just wanted to address those two items, the last two items. You know, we spoke, Roy and I spoke with Michael and John Hyde about the passive housing and we really kind of dove into it in the last week and a half, two weeks. We've talked to I F C, who does a lot of the consulting work and certification. We've talked with Icon Architecture, who we've used previously as well as Rob Schaefer about the, what it entails. And we're trying to get our arms around all the things that we'd be doing differently than we typically do and the cost ramifications of that and the feasibility of it. But it's, it is an interesting program and something we are definitely spending some time and energy looking into. In regards, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, keep going. I was making that, you said in energies. I was making a joke. Go ahead.
All right. And then in regards to the design kind of review process is when we submit to the Z B A, any board or committee or individual can have input and we would certainly be open to meeting with residents or a group that has comments and see if we can implement those throughout the Z B A process.
Okay, very good.
Eric, this is Roy McDowell speaking. If I could just say a little more on the passive house. As Todd mentioned, we've had a couple of conversations with Michael and John Hyde. And we're doing some research on all aspects of the architecture, of the engineering, of the energy efficiency, et cetera. An important component beyond that obviously will be, what are the ramifications to construction cost budgets? Because we'd love to be able to do it. We just have to see if we can actually afford to do it. Now, Michael's and John thought maybe you were somewhere in the three to five percent range. And if that truly turns out to be true, that is probably very achievable. So we're talking to some of the contractors in Massachusetts who have done this process. And we're doing our homework and getting budgets to see, in fact, what effect will it have on our budget?
Okay.
We told the Energy Committee members that we would report back to them once we know.
Okay, very good.
Eric, can I make a motion? Or Jeff, did you have another comment before I do?
Can I just add one thing to Roy's comment quickly, George first?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd say in addition to looking at the cost, there may actually be higher revenue. In other words, residents may pay a premium if they're going to have savings in their energy bills over their rental period. There may be a marketing advantage to it also on the, on the revenue side, I would think too.
No, we, we agree with that. Matter of fact, we had discussed with Michael and John, Todd and I that we think it would be definitely a marketing feature for sure. And I think it would reduce the energy costs for the residents who are paying their own heat and electricity. So I think we just need to look at the overall budget so we understand that. We just don't want to step into something without being knowledgeable about what we're doing.
I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll, I'll just add a little, as Michael again, that, right, they're doing they're, they're, in terms of the timeframe that we started this discussion, they've been quite responsive and we're hoping that in the end there's a two-step process with this passive house of where you do a feasibility study work and then you could decide whether you commit to it for actual construction. We're hoping at least without beating a dead horse too much to get the, to get at least a feasibility study work sort of agreed to, because that way that'll be the nitty gritty as to what the real cost impacts might be and, and the fact that the life cycle cost will probably be less. But there's always obviously issues with upfront costs versus the operating costs and how that works for different projects and who pays what. But, but I'm hoping that at least the feasibility study level will at least really fine tune that kind of thing so that the decision's made on a, on a much more accurate basis. But we'll see. They, they've been working on this thing and we'll see how it proceeds.
I look forward to seeing it. All right, George.
Yes, can I make a motion to approve the letter, to approve the letter to be sent for the LIP project as amended by Paul and Chuck, as they said, adding the language to the end. So we can send this letter along with their package to, to the state.
Second.
All right, all in favor of Paul?
Hi.
Okay, George.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
I am I as well. All right, very good. I look forward to watching this project progress.
Thank you very much.
We need to clarify, Eric or David, the signature, what Stephanie was saying. In other words, are we going to have three select board members sign or have David sign on our behalf?
I can stop in and sign tomorrow if you need me to.
Yeah.
I can as well, but I, I think it's valuable for them to know that this is unanimous vote of a five-member board. I'd suggest listing each member, having Dave put down my John Doe with the slash by D W, you know, identifying that he's the one signed it. But I, I think there's a value in having all five members listed.
I agree. Because it was unanimous. I think that's important.
All five on there. Perhaps in the letter you can add a, a note that it was unanimous vote.
Yeah.
I do want to add though, even though I just voted on that, I am currently in the middle of seeking a legal opinion and the amount I have to recuse myself of this project. So I may or may not sign it, but I support the project, but obviously I have to, I'm just being cautious and waiting until I get that opinion. That's all.
Yeah, Stephanie.
David, text us and let us know if you need us to stop or you have, I think you have our signature lines if you need them.
I have the signatures.
Okay.
But Eric, are you saying withhold yours?
I'm still waiting for an illegal opinion on the degree that I should recuse myself of this project. That's what I'm saying.
Well, then why don't we just, why don't we just have David sign it? That he's, and indicate that he's signing it on, by the authorization of the unanimous vote of the board.
That, that makes sense.
It will not be a no vote against it. It's just.
Yeah, it's either a four oh one or a five oh.
Exactly.
Okay.
Just one point of procedure, if I may.
Yep.
Could the board also vote to endorse the application itself and have that by a vote? So it, or endorse or authorize David to, to sign it. That way, if it's submitted to D H C D, there will be a copy of, of the board's vote that if the D H C D ever had questions, we could, we could provide to them.
I'll move that we support the application.
The full application. All right.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, Paul.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Jeff.
All right.
Chuck.
Hi.
For the application, I am going to abstain because it clearly shows the water sewer connections.
The letter has endorsement on it. In it.
Okay.
All right.
I just think it's, it is important that she wanted both votes and I don't think it hurts to have both votes.
Oh yeah, definitely.
Nonetheless, call it a four oh one, David. All right.
Okay.
Any more on this one? Okay.
Thank you to all the fellows for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your time, making a presence. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Agenda item number four, consideration of town council appointment. I think many, most people know, the town periodic goes through the council marketplace and proposals from competitive firms. We went through and we actually sought four proposals. One from Merrick O'Connell, one from Clifford Kenny, one from Petrini Associates, and one from K P Law. The forms were, these firms were allowed to submit proposals on a, on general H R labor, both combined, both combined. Each firm submitted a proposal for each area or combined. We discussed this in executive session and reviewed the proposals. And with that, we selected Petrini Associates as a final choice. And we have before us a contract with them to act as general counsel. We are retaining K P Law services specifically with Rick Holland for the library construction, with Deb Eckhart for an H R issue. And with K P Law for work on the IMAs with Framingham and Natick for the project that we just, just talked about. All firms have a form of the board's decision and the board has a contract before them. So David, at this point, would we hear from Chris Petrini?
Yeah, that'd be good. He'd like to speak.
Please, Chris, please.
Thank you, Eric and David, and welcome to all the board members and the members on the Zoom meeting here tonight. And I am Chris Petrini. I'm the founding principal of Petrini and Associates in Framingham. We've been in business for over 15 years. We have five attorneys. We represent Framingham. We have other clients as well. We were, as many of you might remember, the town council of Sherburne in 2009 to 2015, when Barbara St. Andre was with us. And then she went back to K P Law at that time after having been with P and A for about 11 years. And then what happened is Sherburne followed Barbara and now Barbara has left the practice of Lauren is now serving as a Midway, Town of Midway Planning Director. So but we're happy to be coming back in. We know a lot of the people in Sherburne. We know several of the board members. We know, I used to work with David both in Sherburne and while he was in Framingham as the assistant town manager in Framingham. And we think we can be a very productive and proactive firm for the town and we'll do a good job and we look forward to working with everybody. If you'd like, I can give a brief summary of some of the key provisions in the contract. That's seven pages. So I don't want to read it, but I thought I would give some of the key provisions to discuss or to highlight to your attention. So one proposal we have is that we, we have, we are not yet officially started with, the proposal is we start in two days on August 15th. The board wanted to get through the town meeting, which made sense with the prior firm in that we were proposing to conclude in this agreement on June 30th of 2023. And I know that is a bit unusual for Sherburne's history is my understanding, but I do note that this will give cost certainty and stability in the relationship. It doesn't really harm Sherburne's flexibility because if you look at section six on page five, termination by the client, as is common in these contracts, the municipality, as the client retains the right to select new council at their discretion, just have to give 30 days notice to us. And I don't anticipate that'll happen. But you certainly retain that right. So there's really is no risk for Sherburne in doing this because you have the right to select a firm, a new firm midstream. But I, it's never happened with the towns and cities we've represented and don't expect it to happen with Sherburne. But that's the reason for the, the terms. The page one describes the legal services and then page two mentions that I, the proposal is that I would be designated as the primary town council for Sherburne and as the backup labor council. And then my partner, Chris Brown, would be the primary labor council. He does a lot of work in that area and the backup town council. But as many of you know, several of the attorneys in the firm and there'll be a lot of direct contact. I think that's one of the things we take a lot of pride in is, is and there is a lot of responsive service by our firm and the attorneys. You have a lot of direct access to the people working on your matters. So you'll be communicated directly with one of the five lawyers in the firm. Let's get to the, the financial side, which is always of interest. Item two, legal fees, basic town council and labor council services. What we're proposing is to provide all regular non-litigation and ordinary basic town council and labor council services for the annual sum of $80,000 per year. And we would prorate that on a, on a yearly basis for remainder of this fiscal year because we're not starting until August 15th. So it'd be basically about $70,000, a little bit more than $70,000 for this fiscal year because we're starting a month and a half in. And what we would do is bill this, this is the same way we did it last time when we were town council. It worked out fine. We bill it in equal monthly increments. It would be about $66,666. And then we bill to several retainer matters and then we keep track of that. And then if you don't use the entire $80,000 of service in a fiscal year, you only pay for the services you use. So I want to emphasize that we're not seeking to be paid for what we don't do. But conversely, once you hit that $80,000, then you would receive the next $10,000 in, in these regular services as, as a discount of written offer for free. And then once you got to $90,000, so you get after that $10,000, we begin resuming billing again. But hopefully it would never, it would not get to that for regular town council services. Where you tend to have more expenses, and this is true with any city in town, is when you have a litigation or lawsuit or labor arbitration or a major real estate transaction. That's where you have fees that tend to be substantial. So the bottom of page two and the top of page three lists all the items that are covered by this $80,000. There's 12 categories. I don't think I need to read them, but it includes attendance at board and committee meetings, attendance at town meetings, reviewing drafting of town meeting motions, review of planning and subdivision documents. Given advice to all the boards and commissions, to the town administrator and various department heads. And again, there's 12 categories here, so I don't think I need to read them all. An important paragraph is the excluded matters under the, at the middle of page three of things that are, items work that is not included within the retainer. And this again is standard for how we work with other clients, but includes litigation, real estate transactions, chapter 40B comprehensive permit hearings, agency proceedings, construction and building committee issues, labor grievances and arbitrations, collective bargaining. There's a few other items that are excluded. So basically what, what it is, is that the day-to-day advice is covered by the $80,000. The special work that we can't predict the cost, that there's uncertain costs or could be substantial amounts of work are excluded. It's been a workable model. It was work. I don't think we ever had any billing issues when we were with Sherburne. That was, I think you just made a decision to go with the prior council who was your day-to-day contact. So that was fine at the time. So it's a workable arrangement. And that what, what we would do is that, as I mentioned, we'll bill that $66,66 per month. And then there'd be in the event you don't build the full amount, there'd be a true-up later in the year. So we credit you to make sure that you're not, again, not paying for services you don't use. The hourly rates of the attorneys are set forth on the middle of page three, middle of the bottom of page three. And then hourly legal, legal services are described and it includes the same category of costs that are that I, I mentioned as hourly services above. And then the, those hourly services are billed at the same rate as the retainer, except they're, the retainer services, except they're actually billed hourly. Invoicing, I don't think I'd have to talk about that. We send out the invoices every month within 15 days of the end of the month. We describe all the services. And then we expect payment within 30 days. Costs and expenses. One thing I want to talk about this on page four is that we, we, we just charge at cost. We don't do any markups. So all the, all the charges that are mentioned on this page four, there's no, there's no add-on, there's no percentage. Some engineering firms will add on them and add-on fee for those types of services. That's all just a pass-through at cost. And, and the firm will advance expenses up to $500, but if it's greater than that, we will usually request a check from the town just because of the large nature of the expense and to keep the accounting straight. The, as I mentioned before, termination by the client, you folks have the right to terminate this agreement on 30 days' notice. And we have the right to terminate on very specific, more limited grounds, mostly due to non-payment. Or if we have to exclude ourselves under the rules of professional conduct, which I don't see that happening here, but we have, we have to retain that right under the rules of professional responsibility. Turning to page six. It was, I just want to talk about representations and exclusions. I just want to talk about what we're not going to cover with either hourly or as retainer. I think we have a meeting of the minds, but as it presently stands, we're not going to do work on the library construction project because I understand that's presently being handled by K P Law. Similarly, conducting H R employee investigations. We have found that as town council, it's not really a good use of town council services where we have to work with department and division heads to be conducting investigations of them if needed. It's better to send that out to an independent person. And so that we, we do exclude that, you know, tax title. We don't do tax title work. We don't do cable TV licensing. And then the, one of the significant exclusions here, which Eric had alluded to is, as folks know, we are a city solicitor for Framingham. We're in the process of negotiating a potential water I M A with, between the city of Framingham and Sherburne. And because of the existing client relationship and that Sherburne has had council on, on the other side, we're excluding that part of the Coolidge Avenue project, or Coolidge Street rather, project only, but we would still be able to give you advice on other aspects of the Coolidge, the Coolidge project. But not the, not the negotiation of the I M A because we would be representing Framingham with respect to that. And those are the major excluded items. And I, that is pretty much about it. Other than the signatures, I'm happy to answer questions, but I just wanted to walk you through and highlight some of the key provisions of the agreement. I'm happy to answer questions and thank you for listening to a somewhat dry presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Are there any questions from the board?
I, I actually do have a quick question, not so much for Chris, but we are retaining K P for the library work as it's indicated in here. But the letter in our packet indicates the rate that K P is going to charge us for that work, which seems which seems a little extreme. And I just wanna, I'm just wondering if that, I mean, if it's that valuable to keep him at that price.
Well, it is a balancing act. I know, I, basically, when you hire your general counsel to do specialty such as labor, you get, he's got a reduced rate. So they're kind of putting it back up to the rate as if we hired them specially. I guess that's something we can discuss. I think it's hard. So I think they're going from what, like two thirty, like two hundred to two ninety, something like that?
Yeah, yeah, it's a major jump. It goes up to two ninety an hour.
Yeah, I mean, and right now they have a lot of institutional knowledge and Rick Holland has been successful at it. I think of the discussion should be now, or what, or maybe the discussion would be now. Do we change that contract and kind of ran, you know, get someone else back up to speed on that project for sixty dollars an hour? You know what I mean? Maybe I might look to Chuck or Paul to kind of give some insight on the loyalty there.
Eric, I think that's something, I think it's a good idea to look into. I don't think you have to resolve it tonight for this appointment or this contract. But because of the increase, I think George is right, we should be considering it. And I've also talked to Chris about his willingness for that work to move over at some point. And it would be outside of the retainer, but it would be the same rate as his, the rate in the contract.
Would it be applicable for an executive session item if we're discussing rates and potentially aspects of the library litigation?
Not to speak out of turn, Eric, but my view is yes, because there may be some strategy aspects to this. But I leave that to the board's discretion. I did want to say, you know, Rick Holland is a very well-respected construction attorney. He is up to speed on it. We did do a peer review, as the board might remember, last year. So we do have some knowledge on the project. We could step in if that were the will of the board. But you just have to balance efficiencies and synergies and the like. And but I just don't want it to be, I just want to make a positive statement about Rick. He does know the area well, as do we. We do a lot of this work and we could take it over if desired, but.
It's no offense to Rick. I just, it's a, it's a big jump in price, so I wanted to bring it up because I think we do need to discuss it.
I put an executive, put an executive item on for the next meeting for eight twenty-seven.
Yeah, George, the, every town council agreement that I've seen specifically carves out litigation. I'm not, Paul and Chris are obviously much more familiar with the norms and the practice of municipal law. It often, particularly with the company litigation, it's often much more expensive. I just wanted to add a comment, the board had asked Paul and I to kind of shepherd this process through. The discussions with Chris were very helpful, very straightforward. And I would urge the board to approve it. I think this is a good choice for the town.
Is that a motion, Chuck?
I want to give Paul a chance.
Okay, Paul, sorry, did you have a comment?
No, I think the issue of the additional continuing work by KP Law is something we can discuss longer term. It's not an issue I think we should decide upon today or even in the next few weeks. Things are going well with the library. And if things continue to go well with the library and things get back on track, it may be that a transition is possible. But I don't see why we need to discuss it immediately. I'd rather let things go for a while, make sure the library is on track.
The only reason I suggested, oh, sorry, sorry. The only reason I suggested discuss it as, George was concerned about the cost and we are racking up the two hundred and ninety dollars an hour. So, you know, rack it up for another two weeks, two weeks after that, and two weeks after that, to address George's concern on the cost. I think it might be a short discussion, but, and if it was going to be a transition, it should be sooner rather than later. At least in my opinion, because you can't keep ramping someone up to speed when the project's done. You know, George, you were the one who spoke of concern. Would you want to?
I would move, I would move to go forward with Petrinian. I think we can have the discussion, discussion on the, on the library later. I don't think we need to discuss that. I think, yes, let's go ahead and sign this contract, but we can discuss that piece later on.
Let David know. If anyone wants to discuss this at the next select board meeting, please let David know.
Okay, because I think, and I agree, it probably should be in an executive session so we can discuss strategy and all that with the library.
Okay, as long as I know that if we're going to discuss this sooner rather than later. So it sounds like, sounds like George, did you make it, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll say, I'll make that as a motion that we approve the contract with Petrinian.
Now Chuck second. Okay, Paul, how do you vote?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chuck?
Yes.
All right, I am yes as well.
Can I put your signatures on the?
Yes.
On the contract?
Yeah, on this issue of signatures, I've been strongly advising my towns to stop the practice of all these multiple signatures on documents. We're in the middle of a COVID nineteen epidemic. You want to reduce the risk and exposure to everybody? There's no need for five signatures on every piece of paper that comes across our desks. So please, let's have the town administrator sign, be authorized to sign documents for us on a regular basis.
All right, would it appropriate to authorize David or myself if the council works for the board? We authorize David to do, sign this?
I've signed them before.
All right. Okay, is there a motion? I think we need to vote on this.
So moved.
All right, off those, David, seconded by Jeff. Okay, Paul?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chuck?
Yes.
I might as well. All right, we were authorized to sign this contract. Okay, well, thank you much and good to have you on board, Chris.
And thank you, everybody. Look forward to working together. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
And item number five, consideration of fire department FEMA grant and charitable donation. As is, we're asking for a motion to accept a FEMA grant. I believe it's for self-contained breathing apparatus, a federal share of ninety-five percent, wow, that's pretty good, of one hundred and forty thousand, and a town share of five percent, seven thousand dollars. And there's also a donation, they're asking for to accept a donation of one thousand dollars from the Joseph W. Faith Tybaryio Charitable Foundation. It's like Zach is, well, I just want to hear, Zach, do you have anything you'd like to say on this?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So we applied for this grant back in February. And I just want to point out that the FEMA Assistance Firefighters Grant Program is very competitive. Thousands of fire departments across the country put in for this. We were lucky enough to receive a first round award, which means that we scored extremely high. And that's something we're, we're very proud of. I just had a couple of members I wanted to thank for their help with this. Deputy Chief Neil McPherson, who's, who's a wonderful grant writer. He was a major help throughout this process. And Neil has put in for a lot of grants for the town over the years. And I don't think he's got a whole lot of credit for that. So I'd like to thank him. And then also Lieutenant Klaus Holman, who helped with some of the, some of the data that was needed to put in for this. It was, it was a major effort, probably fifty hours of work to get the, to get the application of FEMA. And we're certainly very happy that we received this award.
Yeah, very good.
I think, I think you, I think I heard what you said, but so the total grant amount is one hundred and forty-seven thousand. The town share is seven thousand and FEMA's is, is one hundred and forty thousand.
Very good, a very good success story there. Anything else I think Paul wants to make a motion? Go ahead, Paul.
Yes, so can I move to accept the grant and the separate donation? With thanks to the people that the fire chief mentioned, including himself?
Absolutely. Second, seconded by George. All right, any further discussion? Okay, Paul, how do you vote?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
And I'm a yes. All right, thank you very much. Good job, Zach.
Thank you.
I think you're sticking around. I think you're talking on the next agenda item here.
Yes.
COVID nineteen team update. I think that goes.
I think you skipped over, oh, no, I'm sorry, never mind.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Hey, we're on agenda item number six out of nine. That's not bad. Okay, between Zach and, is Daryl on as well?
He is.
Yes, I am.
Okay, between you, who wants to talk first?
Yeah, so I'll go first, just a couple of quick notes. So I just wanted to address, we have residents that, you know, they're very generous. They, they keep reaching out to us, asking if we need, you know, N ninety-five masks donated, things that they find in their basement or their attic. I just want to point out that we're, we're doing very well on PPE from a town standpoint. Back just on Monday, we got sixty-five hundred pieces of PPE from FEMA through, and, you know, we've, we've been very lucky through the, through the N ninety-five mask order that Selectman Waldron set up months ago through, through a number of different channels. So we're, we're in a great spot to support all of our town needs, not just public safety. So I'd recommend that the residents who find the N ninety-five mask in their basement or whatever they, they come across, as long as they're in good condition, I think it's, I think it would be best if they would reach out to their neighbors or their friends to make sure that, that they have the equipment that they need to go to the grocery store or to pick up their prescriptions or whatever else that they may need to do. And again, thank you to all those residents that just keep reaching out. It's certainly, it's certainly a great feeling to see that we have that support from the community. And that's all that I have on my end and I'll turn it over to Daryl.
Well, Zach, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Is it fair to say, you say, reach out to your neighbors and friends first, perhaps even with a bias toward their elderly neighbors and friends?
Absolutely, yeah, the high-risk groups, you know, people with underlying medical conditions or some of the, the older population, absolutely.
I'm glad to hear we've been very successful with the PPE and that we can do such a thing. Okay, Daryl?
Okay, actually, I think I'll add to that and say, or people who have jobs that put them in the position of being exposed at a higher rate to be another group. Okay, so I'll continue with kind of a little bit on the good news front. I think that Sherburne's fortunate relative to a lot of other communities. We've had a, as best we can tell, with the extraordinarily limited testing that goes on, we've had a lower rate or incidence of COVID nineteen. Part of that is due to the low density of population. We have abundant, beautiful outdoor spaces. And keep that in mind when I give a quote from Dr. Fauci in a few moments. We have access to good health services. And I also think, except as I just mentioned, that in general, we tend to have the types of employment that might be more amenable to working from home at a greater rate than other areas may face. But even with all that good stuff, I would say that the virus continues to outsmart us. And recently, Hometown Weekly contacted the Sherburne and Dover Boards of Health to ask about the probable case numbers that the Sherburne Board of Health chose to post on the town's website about those probable cases, probable being related to antibody testing versus confirmed PCR tests. And we did that just in the spirit of sharing this new information that we were able to get through the normal DPH channels that we previously only received information about confirmed cases. So among other questions that the Hometown Weekly asked us, they did ask what extra precautions people should take. And we thought, well, really, the precautions remain largely the same. But we did add one, and that is that people should be getting their flu shots this year just to increase their own personal resiliency for infection. So, so anyway, for, what I'm going to do here is just give a little review. It'll sound, it should sound familiar to concepts that we've been discussing all along. But I collected a variety of COVID nineteen quotes and other news items from the last week, and they're brief. One is Dr. Fauci was presenting at a virtual symposium hosted by Harvard School of Public Health last Wednesday in that he said, "You know what you got to do. You've got to wear a mask, you've got to avoid crowds, outdoors is better than indoors," and all the same stuff. So that outdoors is better than indoors is one of the areas that we're quite lucky on. So regarding these basic precautions, which I'll say that the COVID nineteen work group has promoted throughout this pandemic, Dr. Fauci refers to them as "the way out of this." And he also said that there's such a divergence of how people view this. Whether you wear a mask depends on how you feel politically, which is completely ridiculous because a mask is a public health tool. And then related to that, there's a recent study by the Broad Institute in Cambridge. And they are a group that does a lot of testing for entities within the state and outside of the state. So they looked at the results of the COVID nineteen mass testing that they perform. And their study shows, study findings show that the amount of virus people carry varies widely, but the range and distribution was similar whether people had symptoms or not. So people who have symptoms and asymptomatic is about the same. So their preliminary conclusion is that asymptomatic carriers should be regarded as equally infectious. Also, let's see what else. Governor Baker, certainly, I hope folks are aware, has issued recent changes in state requirements. And those basically reflect concerns about community transmission rates that have been creeping up of late. But as Dr. Fauci had stated, we know what we're supposed to be doing to avoid that. Lastly, I'd just like to remind everyone that the COVID nineteen work group and the Sherburne and Dover Boards of Health spend a tremendous amount of time and effort keeping abreast of the emerging information about this situation. We do that through active research, but also through the collaborations with the DPH, with other fire departments and emergency services groups and a variety of other entities that are also engaged with responding to the, or helping to manage the pandemic. So I'd like to make the offer that if people have questions about this pandemic and understanding of it, they should certainly feel free to relay their questions to us.
Would that go to, when you say us, would that go to like to the Board of Health Administrator or?
It could go to the Board of Health Administrator and it will make its way to both the Board of Health and to the work group as well.
Okay, very good. Any question, Paul?
So I don't want to catch anybody by surprise. So I just want to ask a question for Daryl to be answered at a later date. My question has to do with the mosquito spraying and the EEE situation that seems to be causing a lot of alarm, a little bit south of Sherburne, but now a mosquito's tested positive in Millsacks County. And people are asking me, when are the sprays being done? And should they be taking precautions? What if they're outside and they get insecticide dumped on them was one question, all those kinds of things. So I know you're all busy with the COVID nineteen issues. And I know that those transcend this particular concern from different residents who have asked me about it. But there is this triple E business out there. And so it might be nice at some future time to get an update from the Board of Health about when spraying is going to be done, what residents should do to protect themselves for the spraying and for the mosquitoes. And I also understand that some people can opt out of spraying if they want. So all of that for some future date.
Well, actually, the Board of Health has been discussing it at a number of meetings. One would like to think that all other emergency issues would stop during a pandemic, but they don't. And so all these things continue to receive our attention. West Nile virus is also rearing its ugly head as well. So we have triple E. There have been applications of BTI in a number of wetlands. That information was publicized. And then there were, I'm sure people had to have noticed, I certainly noticed it next to my house, helicopters dropping that into various wetland areas within Sherburne. The State Mosquito Control Program posts information on their web. The State Mosquito Control Program posts information on their website. Anyone should feel free to go there and look, that'll be the most comprehensive set of information they can get. We have been tracking it. In fact, they just asked us to identify the state, something new this year. The key emergency contact within town, which is the Board of Health Administrator, because she's the most knowledgeable, and then she will reach out to, um, other departments in town should there be an elevated concern beyond what it is. The triple E season started very early this year, which has had the Department of Public Health on alert for this, to keep an eye on it. I think the drought, yet another issue that we're looking at, is helping in this regard. The mosquito population hasn't been quite what it usually is as a result of the drought. So.
And I'll say last year that, um, I, I used the state resources and found them great. Maps, dates, when, when, when the spraying is, um, what you can do. I know you can't opt out of the aerial spraying, and I found it very accurate and comprehensive. But I do want to stick to at least the COVID as the agenda item, uh, indicates, so.
Uh, but people can attend the Board of Health meetings because it'll be discussed. So if they have questions for us.
Right, any other questions on the board? How about from the public in general? All right, I think we're good. Thank you very much, Daryl and Zach.
Good evening.
You too, absolutely. Agenda item number seven is an update from a town collector's office, Nancy Hess. Okay, Nancy, you're on.
Assume that you, they hear me, Frank?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now, Eric?
Yeah, now we can.
Okay, I'd like to give you an update on the mandate to centralize collections, a major undertaking I've made, a mission over the past five years, as we try to do it gently. I think you know I have also been trying to position myself to retire for over a year now. But firm progress on the centralizing collections was one thing I really wanted to establish before I left. And I think we have reached a milestone. I've discovered there's no perfect time to leave, so I'm choosing to shoot for next month. I will submit an official letter after we actually have town meeting. All the departments now who generate significant monies accept a money payment, which is easy to expand as the need arises. I had put off sweeping in the cycle operation because we needed to figure out a process that would not be more of a negative than a positive. Residents transfer station personnel and the collector. We just launched a new program this week that I think gets us there. No more money will be collected at the transfer station. People disposing of items which require a fee or purchasing bins will be given up one part of a three-part invoice. The transfer station will keep one copy and turn one copy over to the collector. The resident will also be given a handout with three methods of payment described. Pay it in the silver box on the front of Town Hall on their way home or later in the week, paid online or mailing. We have already received payments and want to thank the residents for their cooperation, as well as Ron and his staff. I remember when I was before advisory expressing my plan to change the law so the transition could be a cooperative process. Mary Wolf on advisory at the time asked what, if departments don't cooperate. A disbeliever in that possibility, I assured her we would address that if it happened. Some of this has been so easy and some has been absolutely torturous. But most departments eventually found it to be actually helpful because it frees them to focus on other demands of their job. To be successful with this, it does take significant education on both sides of the table and reaching the understanding this is not done because the department heads can't be trusted to handle money. But rather, it protects them, they are not bonded. As in layer accountability, move recommendations from the Department of Revenue. Next, I'd like to clarify the facts surrounding the delay in implementing the Vadar system. Things of, uh, would need fiscal 21. Inaccurate information is not helpful and undermines the public confidence in those who serve them. I want to assure everyone that when COVID shut everything down, that decision was made unanimously after consideration by an input from the town administrator, the finance director, the director assessing, the treasurer, the collector and the principal at Vadar. It was determined that launching the new system without the ability for the company to be onsite for the initial complex progress process, for the assessors to get the data in place and make it possible for other departments to do their parts from it, while at the same time transitioning to quarterly billing did not make sense, could be a recipe for disaster and just wasn't necessary. Our current vendor point had many quarterly customers already, so moving us was seamless. It is a little difficult to assess, assess the process because COVID affected staffing. The interest waiver delayed the collection of the May payment along with three motor vehicle excise commitments until June 29th, and the first quarterly mailing had to be out the door by the 30th. Things went amazingly well considering, lot, we had lots of phone calls, return mail with temporarily away and lots of questions. We still have over 200 outstandings, which equals about $600,000, but can't know if that is COVID or quarterlies or both. We also have a handful of fiscal 2020s out, and we have sent out letters, uh, to, as the beginning of the tax-taking process to the various, uh, taxpayers. I've asked the auditors what is best practice regarding an exit audit, whether the subject should be here and part of it or should be gone. They've indicated that there is no best practice, but hope I would, could be available, and of course, I will be. I'd like it to be part of the regular audit, if possible, to benefit from any savings, not having to do the same thing twice. I do want the audit because you know the old saying, "They won't blame you for leaving just for everything else." I am hoping that you will appoint my assistant Pam Downs to temporarily fill the vacancy until the next election where she can run to finish my term or appoint her to finish my term, which is in 2022, and then run. So this transition can also be seamless. Most of you have gotten to know her and hopefully recognize what an asset she is to the town. I have also made it clear to her that I will remain available to her should she be in that position. Since I will want to have all outstanding balances committed by the assessors to my successor and complete other arrangements, I would ask you to make that appointment sooner rather than later with an effective date, which I will put on my letter of resignation right after we actually have town meeting. I do want to thank you for your support and collaboration through the years in your various government roles. I ask you that you carry that forward to my successor. We haven't always agreed, but we have always been able to be civil in our discourse and retain respect for each other. As an old, old resident and taxpayer, I know your job is not easy and I appreciate your commitment to Sherborne. Thank you.
And thank, well, thank you, Nancy. I just, uh, yeah, you've been threatening to retire for a long time and it still doesn't feel real. So, uh, please don't want to see the letter, but I will not enjoy seeing the letter.
Well, thank you for that.
Absolutely. Uh, yes, Paul?
I'd like just to pause for a moment and thank Nancy for her years of service. And want to celebrate with her all the things that she has accomplished. She hasn't touched upon all of them in this, in this, uh, uh, talk she just gave, there are many more things that she's done. I've had the honor of serving on the Board of Select, the longest of the member, the current membership and had a long-time occasion to work with Nancy on, on many, many different issues. And so for myself, for my family, for the town and for all the people of the town, I want to express great gratitude for her dedication and service to the town.
Thank you, Paul.
Um, Chuck?
Um, Nancy, I'd like to ask you a question so we can embarrass you. How many years have you been tax collector?
A hundred.
Yeah, thank you for your hundred years of service. I also have a specific question, uh, you, the additional, um, the collection of other revenues and not just taxes. How many hours of work per week has that added to your, uh, your department's workload?
It is the hardest part of our job. The collection of the taxes really pales compared to the, um, the other. Because there's no program that makes it easy to just do that, it's really a lot of hands-on. And of course, dealing with the taxpayers over a whole bunch of different, um, uh, things that need to be collected, and they're all different because we're doing, as you know, pawn stickers and building permits and things that are not related. So they have, they all have to be accounted for at our level as well as the issue, the stickers or the building permits and so forth. And we handle all the money and have to reconcile it and have to turn it over, uh, to the treasurer in a very prompt manner so the money can be used and also so that the permits can be issued in a timely fashion. So it has, I, I, I can't quantify it with an exact number, but it has at least, um, doubled the, the time that it takes to do our, to do our work. So unfortunately, we've had good staff to help make that be successful. Also, I have to say, many of the department heads have put processes in place that have also made it very efficient. The building department just initials, uh, initiated a, a new process of, um, comparing applications for, for billing permits and so forth, coordinating in such a way that we can, um, go online and pay against the permit so they know it's ready to issue. And recreation has had a program that people register and then they go right online and they pay. For the most part, we, we still take a lot of things over the counter, but for the most part, um, people have been very good about using the online process. And, and of course, we do the, the burn permits. But every department now, including the police department, has the, uh, ability to put things on to be paid online. So, um, and for some, it was like pulling teeth, but we're there with, with most of the departments now.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on the board?
I want to say, thanks Nancy for your years of service, really appreciate everything. We haven't always seen eye to eye on everything, Nancy, but I do respect the work that you've done and, uh, and wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I can't, I can't add anything else either, just did, oh, you, you've been terrific, uh, not just to the select board, but everyone in town, advisory committee and, um, you know, we'll definitely miss you severely.
I appreciate that. I'm not going to move.
Well said, well said. All right, is there any, um, especially, you know, particular about the, uh, the update? Is there anything from the public? All right, yeah, I think, uh, thanks from all of us, Nancy. I think, I want to say, uh, span of three tax collectors have spanned something like 49 years, if I have that right. It's a retention position. All right, if there's not anything else?
Eric, do you remember who the first of that 49-year run was?
I can't remember his name. I know the second was. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll move on to agenda item number eight. Thanks again, Nancy. That's consideration of the 2020 annual town meeting items. Jackie Morris will present on it, but it's about, uh, you know, voting hours at Town Hall, the early voting and election day itself on the first, um, signing of election warrants, um, and town, uh, town meeting update on the setup and so on, and an amended item, uh, the vote on, uh, planning board, uh, zoning bylaw as amended. So, uh, Jackie, you on the call? Somewhere I can see her.
Well, see Jackie, I'm here.
Is someone else I can speak to per se? I mean, I can just read off what was written up in our background material here.
I can say a couple of things if you want.
All right, Mary, Mary Wolf said she can speak to it if you'd like.
All right, let me at least, um, all right, go ahead, Mary.
Well, I can't speak to the, anything, uh, with respect to the elections except to say that Jackie has been working enormous a number of hours and is doing just a fantastic job trying to get that organized. But, um, as far as the town meeting is concerned, um, there come, the AV company is coming to set up tomorrow. Chairs are being delivered tomorrow. We have, um, one side of the venue is going to be totally, uh, this would be outside the garage, is going to be totally open, the other side is going to have a canopy over it. Um, things seem to be moving along pretty well. Um, you know, possibly Sean could add a little bit to that. You know, and, and with respect to Paul's, um, question about the amendment to the, um, planning board article, um, I know that advisory, Marion gave us the text of what the amendment was going to be and advisory is going to be meeting prior to town meeting to vote whether or not they are in favor of that addition. And if they do vote in favor of it, uh, we won't need an amendment because we have already got language drafted to, um, incorporate it in the main motion, so.
And you, I'm muted though.
Yeah, you're there, Jackie, we can hear you.
Oh, hi, sorry, I'm actually in the office, but the internet, I can't get on, on the computer, and so I was using the office phone, so I guess you guys couldn't find me, so I'm really sorry.
That's good. Before we go, go on, I want to follow up with, uh, with Mary's, uh, thing there. Just especially with the select board, and I know we're jumping around the sub, uh, agenda items. But I guess to Paul's amended agenda item, I don't think we have the exact language to vote on here. Should we simply meet pre-town meeting as we have, um, scheduled to vote on a specific language to see if we support the planning board's amendment? I'm asking the board in general. Yeah, Paul?
So I, I received an email, and I think the whole board did, from Marion Nutra with the language of the proposed amendment. And my thought was that advisory might want to have our opinion, just like at the July 18th advisory bloody Saturday. They often turned to us and said, "What, what's the position of the board?" And we would say, "Here's our position" on different articles. So I think that we should take a position, uh, before advisory takes their position so that we can advise advisory.
And this, and this is the language where under, using, um, this bylaw, under open space, the developer cannot develop more parcels than they would have under a normal development, correct?
Yes, there was a question that came up during, I think Marion's on this phone call, she can speak to it. But it's a question that came up during the hearing on July 18th.
Uh, yes, actually, uh, if I can jump in here, Eric.
Go ahead, Mary.
With permission, um, this, uh, this issue was pointed out by a, a member of advisory outside of a meeting. We discussed it in planning board and decided that it was something that we should address and clarify in the bylaw. So, uh, can I share my screen?
Oh, sure.
You have it, but for the rest of the people, I'd like them to see what the, uh, what it is exactly.
David, do you have to get permission from Marion to share the screen?
No, I could do it. There you go. Can you see it?
Yep.
Okay, this is the sentence that we are adding, uh, with your permission, of course, to the section of the bylaw that talks about allowable dwelling units. That is, how many houses can be built in an open space subdivision? And in that section, I won't show the details here, although I could if you like. Uh, it describes a formula whereby you subtract the unbuildable areas, wetlands, et cetera, and use the remainder of the land to calculate the number of houses that would fit, uh, on that remainder land in, in a conventional subdivision. We had, we had assumed, uh, having tried it out on a few properties, that, uh, automatically the number of houses in an open space subdivision would not be more than a conventional subdivision could be. And in fact, I mentioned that in the video, but, uh, it was not written out it, as verbatim in the bylaw itself. So, uh, noticing that there is a possibility of a developer getting around and using this as a loophole, we decided on the advice of advisory, which I think was good advice, to add this section, uh, this sentence. It's one sentence. I should say, the planning board has voted in our last meeting on the beginning of the sentence. If you can see my, my cursor right up to here.
Yep.
An open space subdivision shall have no resident, no more residential units than the number of units that will be allowed in a conventional subdivision on the parcel of land that is the subject of the application. Then there was an additional thought that, well, how do you know how many would have been on a, in a conventional subdivision without doing all the perk tests, et cetera? So we added a phrase to this sentence. And this phrase from the cursor on, we're going to approve tomorrow at five o'clock. And advisory already has the whole thing. So tomorrow at five, planning board will vote to officially adopt the rest of the sentence, which we surely will. And then we'll send the green light to advisory and they can vote on it on Saturday morning. So the continuation is documented by a conventional subdivision general layout as defined in the planning board rules and regulations submitted by the applicant. And that jumped, the, the conventional subdivision general layout is defined in our revised planning board rules and regulations. And we have not yet had a hearing on the latest provisions of the rules and regs, but it, it, it will be in there and it, and it is in there. So taken together, we know the planning board will approve this. If advisory approves the whole thing, this is the amendment that will be before town meeting.
So given that planning board has not approved yet, we could give a, let's say conditional approval, you know, pending planning boards, because, because we're not going to meet again before town meeting.
Yeah, that would be ideal.
So I'd make that motion.
Before we vote, is anyone from the public? And how do I turn off this? I want to be able to see everyone here.
Marion, can you turn off your screen?
Sure.
Okay, I get it now.
I could do it.
Okay, got that. Before, is there any discussion among the board before a motion? Because it's, it is a bit of a change. And just got any questions from the public? All right, okay, go ahead, Paul.
I was just going to say, just speaking as a lawyer. And I'm sorry, I apologize in advance that I slipped in and out of the lawyer role. I think it's good from a legal point of view. It's clarifying language. It does nail down the issue pretty well. And it does prevent misunderstandings and thus potential litigation over the meaning of the words if this was not done. So I would recommend we support the planning board and support what I anticipate advisory will be supporting based on the fact that they had, or some advisory members had suggested this to begin with. So let's get on, let's get on the bandwagon.
And, and I'll give my voice that I, I do intend to support this. But as I've mentioned, I think it was at the planning board meeting. I think it's going to be a rare circumstance in that it's a kind of a check that's not really needed. And if you had one extra house in a division, in a subdivision, it's just not the end of the world to me. I'll still do it, you know, but the other boys do support it. But I, I would almost prefer it the other way, but either way. But I think it's going to be complexity. It's going to be subjective. Because people are going to make a, a potential, you know, regular subdivision layout. And someone's going to say that has steep slopes to it. Let's open up a little bit of a can of worms. And I've spoken that before. But I'm still going to vote for it, but I don't want to make that point of caution.
I, I was thinking exactly the way you were, Eric, until I tried it out on a particular property, which shall remain unnamed, and found that indeed you could put significantly more houses using the open space subdivision by law in a clever way. So I think it is important just to close the loophole because our intention is not to put more houses than would have been in a conventional subdivision. That's the spirit and the intention of the bylaw. So I think it's better to spell it out.
Because you know, again, I have, you're going to have people laying out a traditional subdivision. And someone's going to say, that crosses a wetland, you can't put a driveway there. Because I've seen this happen in Framingham. And someone else will say, well, that's too steep a slope, you can't put a driveway there. And then they'll say, yes, whatever, I, I just see, it's a little can of worms. If it protects one or two houses, I don't care if it protects 10 houses, then I think it makes a difference. But, all right, is there any further discussion among the board?
Or just to add in response to that, Eric, that we would love for you to take a look with us at our rules and regulations because that's where we have more controls. And we could use your input on that.
Okay. Okay, any discussions or motions amongst the board?
Our motions. Mega motion.
Yeah, oh, please go ahead, yep.
So I move that we endorse the language submitted by Marion Nutra, subject to the planning board's actions tomorrow.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Jeff, okay. I'll go around, I'm all in favor of Paul.
Hi.
George?
I'm abstaining because I voted against this article when we, when supporting this article. So I'm not going, I'm just going to abstain from this, from this vote.
Which brings up a good question. We now voting to support not just the amendment, but the entire revised article, is that correct? Like, what's our vote?
I think we already voted to support the article.
Now it's just a vote for the amendment on the article. So George, if it was the whole thing, then George might, okay, but now George.
Yeah, if it was the whole thing, I'd probably vote nay. But since this is just a revision to one I already voted nay against, I'm going to abstain.
Okay, that, that makes sense, that makes sense. Chuck? You're muted Chuck. Oh, he votes yes.
I vote thumbs up.
At least it's a thumb. Jeff? And I vote I as well. Okay, now we have Jackie on here. So I'd like to kind of move back up in, in the, in the sub, what do you call it? The sub agenda item and talk about the voting hours at town hall. Jackie, can you speak to that?
Yeah, so we're, we are required to have early voting starting Saturday, the 22nd. And so I'm planning on doing 12 to four on Saturday and 12 to four on Sunday. And then Monday through Friday, it would be what our normal business hours are. So I'm, which would be like eight to 12. So I'm asking the board once again. You know, unfortunately, it's, I know it's a long period, but since town hall still isn't open, hopefully it won't be an issue. And people can still come in and see the select board in the afternoon or if, or, you know, they're not going to be able to come in the building. But I mean, they'll be able to service them outside, just like we have been. So I don't know. It's just, I think because of COVID, we'd prefer to just keep limited people coming in and keep it just for town, for voting like we did for the June 23rd election.
Okay, so just to clarify that, during the hours of which you're open for, of early voting, no town offices will be open to the public at all, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and just to clarify, those hours are early voting for the 24th to 28th, what are those hours?
It's Saturday, the 22nd from 12 to four. Sunday from 12 to four, which really isn't an issue for town hall. But it would be Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon.
Okay. Okay. Any questions in the board? And also, there was a discussion in the background material about there being some additional PPE protections, sneeze guards and so on like that, similar to the.
Yeah, the same thing that I did for the June 23rd election.
All right, and how about the, the sub item of signing of election warrants for the first and the primary and special town election?
Yeah, so you guys should have the warrant articles or copies of them. Diane or I, I have originals. If you wanted to sign them on Saturday, you could. Or if you wanted to give David authorization to do it. But I, Diane or I can bring them on Saturday morning and have you guys sign them. Tough to you.
I'm finding either way delegating or signing it. I know Paul doesn't feel comfortable having everyone sign it. Does anyone have any strong feelings about that?
No.
And to sign the election warrant? Anyone want to make a motion on that?
So moved.
What are you moving to delegate?
No, I'm moving to that the board of select will issue two election warrants. One for the state senator and congress and so on. And the second for the ballot questions that we had previously sent to the town clerk.
And within that same motion, do you want to delegate signing authority?
Signing authority to Dave Williams.
Okay, okay, that's a motion. Is there a second?
A second, I've got a quick question before we vote.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the capital budget items, those are not changed. They're still all being, they're overrides still. That hasn't changed. Advisory is still funding those through overrides.
Excluded, excluded, yeah.
Yeah, we already voted on that.
No, I just want to make sure that, it, it sounds like, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood, George. I thought we were revoting what was included in the warrant. Did I misunderstand?
The language of the warrant in the background material includes all overrides.
I think, I think we're voting on signing the election warrant. We already voted on the questions that were going to be approved on it.
Thanks, George.
Eric, I don't know if you want to say, Mary Wolf has her hand raised. Something to.
Is that left over from before, Mary?
No, that's new.
Oh, okay.
Not a problem, not a problem. And when you, it just when you're through, because we had gotten, when Jackie came back online, we moved from town meeting to elections. And I just had a couple of other things to say about town meeting.
Okay, we'll finish this up and I'll go right to you, absolutely. All right, so there's a motion and a second. We answered Chuck's question. I guess I'll take, I'll take the roll call vote on this, Paul.
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Jeff? Jeff?
Hi.
I am I as well. Okay, so David can sign the warrant. Yeah, please, Mary, go ahead. I guess right, there is a third, just a general town meeting update setup and so on in there, which would be appropriate for now.
Okay, great. So, you know, I don't know what else Jackie might want to add to the aspects of the setup. But just to reiterate that if advisory does vote to include the new language in the planning board article 20, language has been drafted such that, that they can do that through the main motion. And there will be no need for anyone to offer an amendment from the floor. And one reason we did that is so that, you know, we can move the, everybody's, you know, not wanting to stay there a long time. And we're trying to, you know, move things along as quickly as possible on Saturday. So that's, you know, one reason for doing that. And in conjunction with that, I just wanted to let people know that we will be using three consent agendas on Saturday. We will be using one for articles one through eight, which has been typical for the last few years. We will address the capital program also as a consent agenda. Where we'll ask anyone with a particular question on any one of the lines, they can, they can call a hold on it. But otherwise, we'll vote the capital program as a consent agenda. And then I've talked to Nancy and Heidi. And we're going to combine articles 11 through 14 into a consent agenda also because they are pretty technical and housekeeping. And one of the articles appears every year. So again, the goal here is to move the meeting along as expeditiously as possible and conduct our business and get out.
That sounds like a great idea, Marion. And I think that was well thought out. I also want to compliment you on the practice town meeting as well. And I think that identified issues that might come up in the future. And I think, I suspect you used the results of practice town meeting to determine your consent agendas.
Yes, yes, we did.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Anything from the board on that? Anything from the general public?
Marion has her hand.
Yep, I saw it. I'm catching, I'm learning to look right.
Just a practical question, Mary. Advisory is meeting presumably on site with, with planning board at 8:15 that morning.
Yes.
I'm just wondering how early people are going to be there to check people in and.
Jackie would know that.
I've asked everyone to come around eight o'clock so that we can get, get people set up. Just, I'm not sure how early people are going to come, but I'm sure I'll be there before eight. But I asked my, my checker people to come in by around eight o'clock. By 8:15, no later than 8:15. I mean, we can check you in if you're concerned. Like I can, I can check you in if that's what you're asking. Yeah. I'll be there early.
Okay, thanks.
Well, it does make me think for a second there, for a minute there. I'm going to give an open question to the select board members. Does anyone think there's any reason that we should meet a little bit early as well? And that's an emphatic no right there. Yeah, Paul?
I was going to object to the advisory committee meeting with the planning board in person at the start of town meeting. I, I think that puts too many people at too big a risk. And if you all stay six feet away during this meeting, there's too many members of advisory and too many members of the planning board. So I really strongly suggest on, on health and safety issues that that meeting be done virtually.
Yeah, I, I may have misspoken there because I got a message that advisory was meeting at 8:15 and that I should be there in order to make sure this amendment got, got voted. I assumed that it was on site, but perhaps I'm wrong. I'm hoping it's, I'm hoping it's virtual. In that case, it's cutting it a bit short, so I'm not sure. But your point's well taken, Paul. I think I also misspoke because it's not the whole planning board that would go. It's probably only me and perhaps John Higley.
Which wouldn't be a quorum.
So it wouldn't be a quorum, but advisory is planning to meet that morning. And if, if someone's on advisory, or John, I see you're, maybe you can.
Stephen Tsai is saying they're meeting on site, I think. He's, Stephen's on here.
I would strongly urge them not to do that. Putting a dozen people together in that kind of environment, not a good idea.
I'd like to recognize John Higley who has his hand raised.
Yeah. My, my understanding was that Marion would attend the advisory meeting if it was needed to discuss it. Planning board also posted a meeting, posted a meeting just, starting just before town meeting, in case it's needed. We don't expect it's needed. It was just backup sort of belts and suspenders in case we didn't have a quorum Friday, tomorrow.
Okay. Good to be safe.
Well, just continuing this thought, there, if the advisory is meeting with one or two members of the planning board, that's like 11. If you now want to talk about having a select board meeting, which adds five more people to the 11, you're up to 16 people.
We were saying we're not going to have a select.
I think that, that's moot for us. We're, we're doing 9:00 AM, which is just a meeting of the annual town, town, town meeting.
Wonderful, thank you.
Well, your point is well taken, even just with advisory and me. I have to tell you that I'm a, I'm a COVID fanatic. I'm a social distancing and masking fanatic. I'm an, an anti-COVID fanatic, I should say. So I can't speak for advisory, but if I see them, you know, any closer than six feet together and without adequate wind blowing through us, I'm out of there. I'm going to make sure that we're, we're distanced and we'll see how it works.
I'm going to, I'm going to wrap this up to look at the select board has set theirs. And I'm convinced the planning board advisory can set their, and set their agenda appropriately.
Stephen's got his hand up. Stephen Tsai.
Yeah, comes across like initials. Yes, Stephen, is it just more about the meeting or is it about the agenda? Okay, go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify that we are, advisory is meeting on site at 8:15. There will only be eight of us and we, we don't need all of the planning board there. So, so it's not, it's not going to be a dozen people. It's not going to be 16 people. So, so I just wanted to clarify that. And, and yes, Marion and John, we don't, we don't need the entire planning board. Probably just one of you two there with us would be fine.
Right, we expected.
Okay, Paul?
Just wanted to urge Stephen not to have that meeting in person.
All right, I, I think that message is very, very clear. I don't think, I think we've wrapped up agenda item number eight right now. Let's go on to number nine, consideration of administrative items and routine business. First is from the finance director, is Sharon on the call?
Yes, I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And this is just a formality, really. I had a, I had a phone call from Amy. Okay, all right. And this is just a formality, really. I had a, I had a phone call from Amy Hanfield, who's our DOR rep. And she recommended that the select board approve a 1/12 deficit spending for September as a contingency in case something happens, given the crazy environment that we're working in. I'm, I'm completely confident that everything's going to go smoothly at the ATM, and I won't have to initiate a 1/12, but just to be on the safe side, if we could just approve that.
That makes sense. Is there a motion?
Second.
All right, Paul?
All right.
George?
All right.
Jeff?
Hi.
Jackie's raising her hand.
I need to hear the number, please. I need, I need the number in the motion.
Oh, I moved that we do a 1/12, 1/12 budget for, is that what you needed to hear, Jackie?
No, no, Sharon, what's the number? Can you tell?
Number is, yeah, it's 2,401,322.
2,401,322, did I say that right?
332.
332. Okay, that's included in my motion.
Perfect. Now you can vote.
Second that?
Second.
All right, Paul?
Hi.
George?
All right.
Jeff?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I am I as well.
Thank you.
Some great town administrator reports tonight.
I have nothing.
Oh, there is. That's not social distancing. Any select board reports?
I have two.
Okay, go ahead, George.
Number one, I wanted to bring up an issue with, and I know Sean knows probably what I'm going to say about N-Star, or I mean, Eversource. In my neighborhood, we had, I think it was last, was it last week? That both, the power was out both Monday night and Tuesday night. Monday night, the night before we had the storm, a tree went down on Hollis Street and caught, caught the wires on fire. Eversource reported that we would have power on at 8:30. Then they changed it to 7:15. Then they changed it to 11:15, and the power finally came back on at 3:00 AM. Then we proceeded the next night to have another power outage from 5:00 PM to 3:00 AM. And it's just, it was just, it's just very frustrating to have two nights in a row of power outages and Eversource not having update, accurate updates for, for the residents. I don't know what we can do about it, but it was just frustrating. I heard from a lot of my neighbors about it. And I know Sean's got money in the budget to cut more, down more trees, but I also feel like it's Eversource's job to get out here and clear more trees. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Sean.
Hi, Sean.
Would you like a response at all?
Yes, please.
I could go on for an hour about trees in Sherburne. But I do want to point out that most of our outages are going, are being caused by live trees. And both of the ones on Hollis Street were live trees. The one the night before the storm was actually a blessing for us. Because, and Eversource for that matter, because it was a colossal mess. It snapped a pole, it caught the pole on fire, it caught the tree on fire. Took us about two hours in the morning to clean up, but that was prior to the storm. So while an inconvenience for many, it, it spread the work out for us a little bit. In the future, I would urge people to pay attention to the meetings when the DPW, the tree warden, the planning board, Eversource want to discuss taking down trees that are not just the dead oak trees. There are many, many, many pine trees in town that are at risk of falling over. That was a, a very large pine tree. It was probably 80, 90 feet tall, and it just snapped five feet off the ground. Leaned over, took down a set of primaries. I don't know how many people were out of power, but that came at a significant cost to Verizon and Eversource. And I assure you, they would have much rather taken that tree down ahead of time.
Yeah, I'm sure they would have. And, and I, and I don't blame the DPW at all. I think you guys have a great response to these things, and the fire department as well on that one. I just wish we could, as a town, think about, think ahead on, on these things, because I know a lot of people like to protect every tree that has one leaf still alive on it. I'd like to take public safety into account as well. Because that can be dangerous for people to have power outages two nights in a row like that, that are on oxygen, that kind of thing. Like, it's just, it's not, it's not, it's not a safe environment to live in with as frequent of power outages as we've had at this end of town this year.
Agreed.
All right, you had a second thing?
Paul has a question. Paul, do you want to add to this? I know I see your hand up.
Actually, before we go on, John Higley has his hand raised. John, is it relative to the, or is it leftover?
No, it's, well, I'm, I might be leftover, but it's, it's just to follow up in what Sean said. We have a tree manual. It needs to be updated.
Okay. And, okay, good point. Do you have a second thing, then it goes to-
Oh, wait, Paul, go ahead.
Well, actually, it's Chuck's turn, because he raised his hand after you when you said you had two. I do want to take it in order.
Okay.
Chuck, did you have something, a report?
I wanted to take a, a few moments to, as I think everyone knows, Ruth Johnson passed away recently. John Hudson and Eric, our most esteemed chair, organized a wonderful memorial service. It was a virtual service, and it was really, there, I would guess there were 50 to 75 people on it. It was a huge number of people. And I just wanted to spend a moment remembering Ruth. When I thought, every time I thought of her, I thought of somebody who's intelligent and compassionate, principled, dedicated to the town, strong-willed, determined, active. When she always acted with integrity, and her commitment to public service and zest for life and love of family, being a valued friend was really, came through in the testimonials at the memorial service. Might kick him in particular. Had one that was just, brought a tear to my eye. Ruth started her career, professional career in banking, where she became a writer and editor of the New England Business Review. During those years, she earned her bachelor's degree from Harvard, and this is when there were six to eight times as many men at Harvard as there were at Radcliffe, and the Cliffies were a hell of a lot smarter than the Harvard students. She married her husband David, moved to Sherburne, and has been a very active member of the community throughout her life. In addition to raising Eric, which I'm sure was a full-time job, she managed to serve as the position of treasurer in Sherburne, and then as tax collector. And during her tenure, I think Ashley Eric mentioned this at the memorial service, she was one of the first people in town to jump on the computer, to use the computer or to finance, computerize the finances of the town. She put in place policies and procedures that I suspect are still being used. She also served on the elderly housing committee, tax aid committee, board of registrars, council on aging, and Bay Path Elder Services Board. Thank you, Diane, for coming up with all, all those committees. And still found time to be an active member of Pilgrim Church. And her service to her family, the town, and to the church touched so many people. So I was just always struck by her integrity, and I thought she set an incredibly high bar for the rest of us to follow. And all of her many activities are a constant reminder to all of us about the importance of public service. Sherburne's a better place because of her unselfish contributions to friends, family, and the town. So just wanted to have a remembrance for Ruth Johnson, who was just such a wonderful member of our community.
Well, thank you.
Well done.
Well, I don't like-
I have two items. I think now if he's finished, I have two also.
Okay.
I have something.
Next.
Yes.
I wave it.
Okay. So Jeff, you'd be next then.
Well, the one, easy one is I'm very sorry, but because I was in Chicago, I have to abstain from town meeting, because Governor Baker wants me to quarantine for 14 days. So I'll be watching you on TV and cheering you on. The second thing, on a, on a more serious note, not for this meeting, but as you probably have all noticed, we're on the borderline of a very severe drought right now. And so I've been on calls with the DPH and the Mass Water Resources Commission, and Dover Board of Health, and the Sherburne Board of Health. So we're planning at our next, whatever it is, the 27th, we'd like to add to the agenda presentation on the drought conditions. There's some graphs that we can show comparing this year's rainfall. We're right now around seven or eight inches below normal for, for this time of year. And there are a number of towns, if you've driven around a little bit, I think Midfield has signs banning irrigation systems. There's a number of towns that have taken measures, and Paul can probably tell us about some of the other towns that he consults with too. So we would just like to make the residents aware of it at our next select board meeting. Present some slides showing the data, and Dara will talk about measures that we can maybe recommend for Sherburne residents.
Okay, very good. That's at the next Board of Health meeting, is it?
Well, no, I think they will be discussing it there, but I think we should do it at the next select board meeting. Just a brief presentation, because it gets a broader audience.
Okay.
I was just walking by the computer when I heard you, so sure. Whatever he said, sure. Okay, excuse me, got to go back to my home stuff.
All right, is there any other select board reports?
I have one more, sorry. As I mentioned earlier on, I think before the meeting started, Tuesday night, there was a joint school committee where there were at least 600 people on the Zoom call in regards to the reopening plan for the schools. I just wanted to report to this board, because I think it's so important, that the school committees did vote to go to a hybrid model, where the kids will be going two days a week and working remotely three days a week. So half the kids will be there Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday's a cleaning day, and the other half will be going on Thursdays and Fridays. The nice thing about Dover and Sherburne, we have enough teachers that the kids will be able to stay in a cohort with their teachers. So the teachers will also be teaching remotely with them the days that they're home. So the teachers won't be exposed to all the students. So I think, I want to commend the schools. They've worked crazy hours and time, and I also want to commend Matt Vitale for his work with the schools to get this reopening plan in place from the Board of Health. He's been great. It's very important to all of us parents in town. It's a very critical item right now about whether to have our kids in school or not. And, and I just, it's amazing to me, the amount of people, like teachers working over the summer on this. The administration's been fantastic. They've really put a lot of time, thought, and effort into developing this plan, and I really want to commend them and, and their efforts on, on doing this. In fact, the regional schools have another meeting tomorrow night to clarify one of their votes. Just, they, they had some amendments regarding some protection for teachers. So, so I just wanted to commend the regional school, all the school committees for, for the work along with the administration and teachers.
Fine, very good. I can only imagine. Okay, and then the select board report.
Well, I'm sure Michael Lesser has his hand raised for some reason.
That would be me, because it's his computer I was walking by. Just to further that, I forgot one other, and now I'm forgetting the person's name, and I don't have my notes. An epidemiologist from Harvard also talks about how reopening the schools in some fashion should be possible, but it's very dependent on the level of community spread. And so we can't take our eyes off of that, because all it takes is a couple of kids in the school transmitting to end up shutting everything down. So people just have to continue to be diligent about the precautionary measures, as I mentioned, and we need to set those good examples for them. So.
Good point.
Akish Shah is his name.
Good point. All right, I don't want to turn a select board report into an actual agenda item. So if there's, if there's nothing else, I think we're ready to close the open session and move into our executive session. I need a second and a roll call vote to move into an executive session, discuss the items as previously and clearly read by our town administrator. What's that?
No.
I think, I think- And a second by chair. And I just want to clarify that the chair does so declare that it, that warrants an executive session. So all in favor of Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And Jeff?
Hi.
And I, I as well. Okay. We are, and we are out of open session and entering executive session. I guess David, if you can continue, like-